Isn't everything? It's, that's why we have like Chris, Chris does that. He's the, oh, look, here he is.
Here he is.
I'd just like to explain, um, the board still has the final authority on all transportation as impractical. What this does is gives you superintendent to start that process. So if we look at all of our routes each year, we'll go through and look at them. And we see some routes that are impractical superintendent has that process or that ability say, I think this is impractical. So that generates us to go through and generate letters to these families saying, hey, we think it's impractical. You can either accept the payment or you can dispute it. So once we get that feedback from them, they dispute it and it comes back to the state of Ohio and they'll review it and say, yes, we agree with you or you don't. And once that's done, then it comes back for final approval with you guys to say, yep, they're impractical and we are going to pay them. So you still have final authority on, on that. All that does, Mr. Miller, test that process in motion to say, I think this is from a operational standpoint, the best interest of the district. It doesn't make sense for us to provide transportation. We're going to start this process. The board still has final approval on all, uh, transportation as impractical.
Well, then can we start that process without creating this document?
Then I'll have to bring each student to you every time we think it's impractical. And there's a 30 day timeframe when that happens. So it's not a practical process. If Mr. Miller doesn't start that process, it just puts us behind the power curve to try to inform families in a timely fashion that we are going to declare your, your transportation impractical. They have to wait. They, let's say they do it tomorrow and I gotta wait for 30 days for the next board meeting to come through. I've lost 30 days for that ability for that family to understand what that, what that means. So.
Mrs. Bodie, would you be more comfortable we pull that one out for a separate vote?
Yes. And also purchasing council of governments, I have not been able to, since I received this, make, figure out really what that means.
Mr. President.
Yes, that is a purchasing cooperative within the state of Ohio. So they'll go out and, and do public bids on, on various items. So whether it's HVAC units, lighting, buses, whatever it may be, they'll go out and do the public bid process, which is required by Ohio for, for certain items. What this does, it allows a district to go out, if we have, let's say we have the same HVAC system that's been publicly bid and we want to put that into our building. Um, they've already satisfied that public bid requirement. We can go get their pricing and put that in our building. So they've gone through that public bid process already and got that pricing on our behalf. So they do that for school districts and local governments to meet that bid requirement. So they do all that work.
Is actually cost savings for us.
Potentially, potentially. And sometimes we'll look at that and we, depending on the environment, we won't always use it, but it can be a tool we can use from time to time where we may look at the, um, right now, equipment's getting, getting more and more expensive. So that contract that we want to look at going forward may be beneficial to us and trying to go out and seek our own bids for that. So it's a safe area for us to use if we, if we have the opportunity to use it and we feel it's in our best interest. If not, we'll go through our own bid process and do that as well. So this provides another opportunity to look at another set of, uh, costs that have already been bid out through the public process, or we can do it on our own. Either way, and sometimes we'll go out on our own and if, if it's not as good as this one, we can reject those bids and go with the, the one on the contract. So just another opportunity for us to look at cost saving measures.
All right. Thank you. I understand that.
Sure.
All right. So Mrs. Bodie has requested pulling B out. Is there anything else you want to pull out? Mrs. Bodie?
I'm reading. Sorry. I think that's it.
Okay.
All right. It's getting late. I'm.
I think we're all feeling that way. All right. I have a motion and a second from Mrs. Schaefer and Mr. Adi. Let's vote on items A, C, D, and E. Without further discussion.
Would you call the roll?
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes. I'll take a motion to approve B, resolution authorizing superintendent make determination of impracticability, March 20, 22nd. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. The chair will second. Is there discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
No, I'm just not comfortable voting yes. I'm sorry.
And Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes. Thank you, board. We'll move to our second portion of public comment. Again, a reminder, please state your name. If your address has been listed, you do not need to state that. Sorry. Um, please limit your comments to three minutes and this can be on any topic. It does not have to be an agenda item. Our first speaker is Dana Richardson. Mr. Mike Wheatley will follow.
My name is Dana Richardson. I came here tonight primarily to hear the special services department update and I wanted to share a little bit about our experiences with special services at Lakota since it is disability awareness month. My son's been receiving services from the district since he was four. He's 10 years old now and doing very well. He's in primarily all gen ed classes. He's actually in the gifted classes for his grade. I wanted to take a moment to thank all the intervention specialists, speech therapists, occupational therapists, teachers and staff that have worked with him, helped him, been patient with him and helped him grow and meet his goals. The majority of his intervention has been behavior and communication focused. Academics primarily have gone well for him. I know that, um, we may look at academic progress and success of students with disabilities as one marker of success with intervention, but I wanted to share my son's experiences to show that communication development, emotional development and regulation and behavior growth are equally important areas of interventions to follow. By receiving support to help him communicate with his teachers and peers, by learning how to identify emotions and adjust his behavior to manage and regulate his emotions, he's been able to be a more successful student. Learning is easier for him when he can communicate and be in control of his feelings and actions. I don't think these things are very different from a most kids need to be successful at school. Those same things have also helped him to become more successful in his relationships at school. He has friends. This has always been our biggest concern and worry for him far above academics. I've heard some concerns voiced, excuse me, from some board members regarding social and emotional learning. I worry that those views may be skewed from what I've learned and seen all these years watching my son make progress with his social and emotional learning through his IEP. I recognize that his intervention isn't the same as social emotion learning that other students his age will be learning, but the main components are the same. Self-management, self-awareness, responsible decision-making, relationship skills and social awareness. I think these things are helpful for all students to be aware of and learn about. I shared our story to give a perspective on the good things that arise when our kids learn more about recognizing emotions in themselves and others and what appropriate responses to those may be, how to build friendships with those around them and reinforce responsible decision-making. Parents do do so much of this at home, of course, I know we do at our home, but the school environment can be different from the home environment with many different presenting challenges and stressors. Providing students opportunities to learn this area can be a beneficial thing. I hope that by sharing our story, I can give a new perspective to a somewhat controversial topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. Mr. Wheatley is up. Matt King will follow.
My name is Mike Wheatley. I'm going to share with you some reflections on something that was said at the last school board meeting that caught my attention. It impressed me. Thought about it a lot, really want to commend the person who said it. So the quote was, "We have our successes and to be successful, we have to see our failures." And that was said in the context of the Lakota School District. And so I would hope that this would be, let's call it a template for the way that we teach American history within our school district. Uh, yes, our district has its successes. I mean, the spark was here earlier. Um, let's teach those. Our country has, the list of successes just go on and on. Let's teach those. Let's teach about victory in Europe, victory in the Pacific. Uh, let's teach about our constitution and the framers of our constitution and the 19th amendment, all the amendments, the suffragettes. Uh, let's teach about Martin Luther King, Rosa Parks. Let's talk about the Salk vaccine and all the vaccines that preceded and those that followed. But also let's not forget that to be successful, our democracy is to succeed, we need to see our failures. To see our failures, we have to teach those. So let's teach about the genocide of our American, Native American peoples. Let's teach about wounded knee and the Trail of Tears and the broken treaties. Let's build lesson plans around the 300 years of American slavery and the lynchings and the segregation that followed, the redlining, the Tulsa Race massacre, the police bombing of that 1985 house in West Philly. For 11 African-American children, mothers, fathers were killed. Let's teach about the Colorado coal strikes where the Calif, the Colorado governor called out the National Guard to put down the strike and in the process killed miners, their wives and their children so that Rockefeller could eat more caviar. Let's teach about Watergate and corporate greed and Enron, Love Canal and deregulation in the subprime market and what that caused that great recession of 2007. And I've heard conversations about being transparent. Let's be historically transparent. It's a mistake to whitewash and I think that's what I'm speaking to because I've heard people talk about whitewashing and sanitizing our American history. And I hope that we will continue to do our part with the Lakota schools to help our democracy succeed by recognizing our failures. So let's teach the good, let's teach the bad, let's teach the ugly. Let's teach the good that we might celebrate it. There's much to celebrate. Let's teach, let's teach the bad that we might condemn it. Let's teach the ugly so that we do not have to relive it, that we might learn from our failures. Thank you for giving me the courtesy to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Wheatley. Mr. King is up. Jill Johansson follows.
Great. Hi, board. My name is Matt King. I'm a business owner. I have a business that's headquartered in West Chester, Ohio. I'm a proud Lakota East graduate. I see some Spark students here tonight. I was in that program as well. And, uh, I also was a Butler Tech student back in the day. I'm a product of public education. Uh, I, I'm here though, tonight to talk about my support for school choice as a, um, really to get a perspective from the business industry because I see a lot of parents come up here and talk. I'm an energy executive for a half a billion dollar petroleum and oil company in Middletown, Ohio. I have various rental properties, commercial and residential. And, um, more than ever, it's hard to find skilled workers. I know some people are watching tonight that own businesses. It's very hard to find, um, to find skilled trades. And, uh, the quote tonight, I believe from the superintendent that 110,000 skilled trade jobs are on the market. Uh, Butler Tech unfortunately turned away 700 students, uh, not because of a failed interview or a GPA that didn't meet the requirement or attendance. It was because they didn't have room. It was a lottery system and the funding wasn't there. And so when you look at options, those 700 students, where do they have to go to become a welder because they didn't get into Butler Tech to become a welder? They're going back to Lakota. They just can't open and enroll into a neighboring career tech school. It's not that simple. And I think in the marketplace, we encourage competition. Imagine a world where you could only fill up your gas, gasoline, um, at one gas station or go shop at one Kroger's. Competition is great. It encourages, uh, things to raise your standard of living. And so I think right now in Ohio, we're at a very pivotal moment. Um, Ohio ranks ninth in the amount of people that move out of the state. In 1980, we had 24 congressional seats. After the redistricting, we have 15. When I grew up, when President Bush, before he was running, he came to Voice of America Park because he spoke because Ohio mattered. Imagine a day when presidents don't visit Ohio because people are moving out. And so this is something that is a legislative issue. I know Representative Gross, it's public that she's the only state rep, um, in the county that supports school choice and the backpack bill. Um, as of today, I could be wrong unless some, someone changed their mind last minute. Um, but she will be redistricted to just West Chester. Liberty Township will be open and I support school choice. I support the backpack bill and I'm actually running to be state representative in Liberty Township. Thank you all. I appreciate all the support that, um, you guys do for the district and I encourage you to think about skilled trades, EMS, law enforcement, police and fire, military education, as well as college. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. This is Jo, this is Johansson, Johnson. And Jessica Williams follows.
Hello, my name is Jill Johnson and I'm a parent of two children in Lakota schools. Um, first of all, I want to thank those of you who stated your opposition to Ohio HB290, also known as the backpack bill at the last meeting. And we would love to hear from the rest of you when you feel you have enough information to make a statement. Next, I would like to address the diversity needs results from the community opinion survey presented at the last meeting. One of the questions was, how would you rate the job that Lakota School District does to meet the needs of a culturally and academically diverse student population? And I want to point out that 19% of parents among races other than white answered poor or very poor. Um, and I'm pointing this out because this is a problem. I think we need to find out why parents do not feel like the needs of a culturally and academically diverse student population are being met. And I really think that our goal should be that every child feels valued and affirmed at school. And I want to add that this also includes seeing themselves reflected in the curricula. So I'm stating this because I'm asking the board to keep this in mind as curriculum discussions continue.
Hi, my name is Jessica Williams and I wrote my address on the sheet. A few weeks ago, I attended a board meeting here where a lawyer who works with Lakota gave a presentation about public records and social media use. As I'm sure you recall, your online posts also represent Lakota, especially from your school board pages. Since this meeting, a school board member has posted to social media an endorsement for an upcoming partisan election, who we just heard from, and several memes and articles from white, right-wing media outlets, including, um, a personality, I guess, in the right-wing world, which included this quote, "Women have nothing left that's ours. Anyone can appropriate our sex. We are referred to as bleeders and pregnant people. Biological men beat us out of our own spaces. Woman doesn't have any definition or meaning. And we're expected to accept our own erasure. It's gross." And this was from Sydney Watson. And the person wrote, "I stand against the dehumanizing and cheating against women by the Democrats," on their public school board page. These posts do not shine a positive light on Lakota and I am concerned about these partisan, transphobic and misogynist posts by a supposed nonpartisan elected public school official. Not only does this make Lakota look bad, it has me concerned for the safety of students who may identify as trans will be targeted by the school board. A reminder, in case you've forgotten, I doubt you have, um, that you previously removed a school board member for private racist comments. So a pretty public, transphobic comment is very concerning to me. Um, as a side note, uh, when we're talking about public things and, and being spread around social media and, and the internet, uh, my fourth grader told me that Lakota taught her how to cite her sources and how to cross-reference information so that false information does not get spread as easily. Um, and I just want to thank Lakota for doing such a good job of teaching the next generation to make sure they look for facts and cross-referencing and go to legitimate medical journals when they have questions. Thank you.
So to summarize, Mrs. Richardson has talked about her family's experience with special services for her child. And I think it's amazing to hear that he's doing really well and that I know that our staff really, really appreciates hearing that. And for me to hear that he's got friends and he's learned how to make friends is even better. Great to hear that. Mr. Miller, did you want to comment on that?
No, I think you said, you said it, but, um, I made some notes and I'll circle back with her.
Mr. Wheatley, um, you know, your eloquence as a pastor of many years is still very evident. And I thought you made some very strong comments about the good, the bad, the ugly and that we need to make sure that our students are aware of all those things. And then we teach them not what to think, but how to think about situations like that in our history and, um, appreciate that you made those comments. Board, any comments on that?
Yes, I, I agree. I believe that there is, um, history that has been left out. However, I do not agree with, so I'm putting there political, um, agenda and Marxist beliefs within that.
We'll move on. Mr. King? Uh, Mr. King spoke as a business owner here in West Chester and I actually was a board member on Butler Tech and I know Matt was very involved and very innovative in terms of new programming for Butler Tech students. And appreciate that he referenced once again, the importance of skilled workers. And I think it talks to us, we're talking about our curriculum and what we're doing in the future. How do we incorporate more of the career tech into our actual K-12 program? Mr. Miller, did you want to talk about that?
Nope.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. I'm carrying the load evidently. Okay. Uh, Mrs. Johnson has asked for, uh, feedback when people are comfortable and have enough information on how to spell 290. She also has expressed concern about the diversity response and the community survey that we had saying that 19% said poor, very poor. Would you like to tackle that one?
No, I mean, she's, she's right. And that's one of the things that we're work on, working on and one of the benefits of having low die in our school district.
And Mrs. Williams talked about, um, social media concerns that she had and concerns about making sure that our students are all valued. And I, I feel comfortable with saying that our students are valued by this board and that we'll continue to look out for their safety. And glad that your children have learned how to understand information and, uh, know how to find resources and, and all of those things as well, that we hope that all of our students are learning. Any further comments on anything, board?
Yes, I would like to agree with what, uh, Mrs. O'Connor said, but I also would like to state that I do not think that sticking up for women's athletics against transgender females competing is any, is, um, anti-transgenderism. It's sticking up for women, working hard for their athletics.
All right. Thank you. We will move to closing comments and we will start with Mrs. Bodie.
I'm fine. Thank you. I have no comments. Okay. Mrs. Schaefer? Um, again, just thank you for special services and all the work that they did. I actually could relate to Mrs. Richardson and all the good work that was done when I had a student who started here at three years old and spoke about five words at the time. And it was amazing. Um, they thought that he had apraxia, which we're not really sure if he ever did or didn't. I don't think he really, anyway. Um, but I'm so thankful for all the work special services did and how quickly they were able to evolve and make changes. Uh, Spark today was wonderful. Thank you. Congratulations on all your hard work. We also had some students compete in the Southwest Science and Engineering Expo. We had four students who are awarded, uh, some funds for that work, three who qualified in the top 10% and six who moved to the State Science Day. So congratulations to them. Um, Chicago will be playing at West, so anybody who'd like to get tickets for next weekend can do that. Also, our SROs have worked to create Lakota Safety Village and they're hoping to get as many of our kindergarteners enrolled and involved with that. And they'll be working with our teachers this summer. And so that's a wonderful contribution that our SROs have made to help get our little ones ready. Um, we have state of the schools coming up tomorrow night, so if anybody has an opportunity at seven at Lakota East, we hope to see you there. Um, we also talked about Lakota listens and if you have any complaints, maybe if you have something nice to say too, we could put it there too. Like, just to change pace. Um, so again, a lot of things were said at tonight's meeting and I think I said earlier what I wanted to say. I, I do really wish that policy could be, um, clear and concise. Um, and I hope we can work that way when we're making some changes, um, it's my understanding in the policy committee. So that's all.
Um, just again, hats off to Spark and to our nurses and, um, all the great things that are going on there. And I'm going to give a shout out to, because Mrs. Fuller won't do it, to, we had a team at Lakota East, HOSA, this weekend when the state and is the state turn, the state tournament for their category and are moving on to the international competition, which I believe is in, where is it?
Nashville.
In Nashville.
One of the superstars is here, I think, right? Maybe?
Oh, yay. So congratulations. And I hope we see them at a future meeting for, for our spotlight. And Mrs. Fuller's daughter was the other one. So she, I'm going to say that for her. Um, so again, um, I just, one of the things that when you are elected to the board and you take your oath of office, one of the things that's in the oath of office is that when decisions are made, you will respect the will of the board. And it's not always easy. We're not always going to agree, but once a vote is taken, you respect that vote whether you agree or not. It just makes the process and the reason that we're here function better, function as a unit better. So I just, I have a little concern when Mrs. Bodie says things like, I will, I'm going to go into the schools even if I'm not allowed and I will notify people. That's not how we do things. I mean, we have to respect the wishes of the entire board in a process like this. And again, we're, as we saw tonight, we're not always going to agree, but it's what we're charged to do when we take that oath of office. So that's all.
I would ask you not to personal comments, but I do understand your concern.
I, I understand. It's more of a teaching moment. Well, number two, you got my quote wrong again. Let's move on.
Mr. Adi?
All right. Uh, thank you everyone for being here tonight. Uh, we started with achievements, a lot of successes in our schools and that's what we should all celebrate. Um, we should also understand that we live in the greatest country in the world. I always say this because I come from a different country. I know what I went through. I know what you have and what we have here. Let's celebrate our country. Teachers, teach what is in the curriculum and make sure that you celebrate this country because we have a country to protect. There are so many attacks. I'm speaking from experience. Teachers, make sure you're doing what is right and we'll all be happy. Uh, I, I started by saying that Martin Luther King had a dream and that dream has been achieved and is celebrated worldwide. So let's be conscious of that dream. Let's continue to let our students and our children understand what that dream is and we have achieved it already. So let not go back. Thank you so much.
Mr. Miller? We're going to have Mr. Miller speak and then I'll speak. And Mrs. Logan, I'm going to let you have the last word.
Thank you.
Congratulations to our students tonight that we got to recognize. I'm going to talk about that in just, uh, a few seconds, um, but also to our nurses again, for all the work that they did. Uh, we have a lot to be proud of. That was evident to me about, uh, two or three weeks ago when we hosted the Digital Promise League of Innovative Schools here at Lakota. Um, the feedback about the work that our teachers and staff and kids do was something that I needed to hear, um, how uplifting and refreshing and how, um, this district is a beacon, um, for so many others, um, not just in Ohio, but across the country. One of the shining examples, that was Spark and the feedback I got from, uh, fellow educators One of the shining examples that was Spark and the feedback I got from uh fellow educators about Spark. You, you see it tonight. You see it all the time, but to hear somebody from the outside that doesn't live it, doesn't breathe it every day was really refreshing. And um, that, the, the visits that we did through six different schools could have happened at any of the 23 that we have. And so it's, that's just a representation of um, all the good things that happen in our classrooms and that the extra that our teachers and staff do every single day for our kids and how our kids shine and the conversations. I don't know if Ayesha is still here or not, but the conversations we had at lunch with our kids and um, was very uplifting and refreshing um, to get that student voice that uh, we need to make sure we go back to. Um, so I just wanted to mention that and then State of the Schools tomorrow night at seven, but you, the student, and this is really important, the student presentations and showcase start at 6:15. So I would say 6:15 and then we start off at, at seven and as has been pre-pandemic practice, um, our kids and staff uh will have an integral part of um, that presentation. So I'm, I'm looking forward to um, that a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I was also going to reference the great theater that happens at Lakota West and, and this time of year is always wonderful because we have all kinds of things to see our students involved in, whether it's theater productions or choir concerts or band concerts or athletic events. And it's, it's a very busy time of year, but it's neat because we get that chance to see our students achieving across all different levels. So if you get a chance to attend any of those events, we, we highly recommend them. Echoing everyone's comments about our nurses and our Sparks students and our HOSA kids that are here also and thankful that you have those opportunities to achieve even outside of the classroom and thankful for our staff that including our special ed, as we heard about tonight, how many of our students are impacted and learning life skills and good things happening there. We are always in the process of continuous improvement and I think having diverse voices at the table is better for us than, than people who just think alike. And I appreciate that we push back on each other, even though it does occasionally look like sausage making. It's not pretty, but it's still, I think, the best way to, to come to good decisions. Um, board, State of Schools tomorrow night, so we've got lots of student things happening. Are we all planning to be there? Do you have Butler Tech?
I have class.
You have class. All right, Julie will be learning. The rest of us will be there.
We'll also be learning though.
Yeah. And let's be sure that uh, we make it there in time to walk around to those different tables at the student fair. That'll be kind of, kind of neat opportunity to see that. Uh, we are doing policy a little bit differently. So just as a notification, we're going to try a different process. Uh, Mr. Vogelmann is going to be meeting with our Niola rep and then bringing forward first reads, which the entire board will be discussing. And so you'll see some more of what you saw tonight, which is okay. That's how we get to good decisions. So we're changing our policy process a little bit. It'll be full board discussions and we'll see how that works out. And again, it'll be part of our regular um, board meetings. So you'll have the opportunity to see that. Was there anything else on policy? Changes?
I have a question regarding that. Did we want to stay with our best practice of two weeks?
Um, I think that can be a discussion we have when we have our first full policy board meeting.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Um, I think that's all that I have for tonight, tonight, and I will turn the floor over to the best treasurer of the state.
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly announce that I intend to resign my position for purposes of retirement on August 1st, 2022. My letter of resignation will appear on the agenda at an upcoming board meeting. But I felt it was necessary to get ahead of that and quite honestly, control the message myself. This decision has been one I have personally struggled with, but have now reached a sense of peace and know that it's the right thing for myself and my family. Lakota has been my home for the past 11 plus years. And to have been a part of this awesome team and to sit by you. It's been an amazing opportunity and I will forever be grateful. It has been my honor to serve this wonderful community and its outstanding students. I will take with me many memories, some good and some bad. But all of them are part of my story. And my Lakota story is still being written for the next four months. So there will be more to say, but plenty more to do. So thank you for allowing me this time. Thank you.
So we will be addressed, thank you, Mrs. Logan. We'll be addressing that and what our plans are over the next few months. So with that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Adie. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Jenny, would you call the rule?
Mr. Adie?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
Yes.
And Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes. Thank you for coming out, everybody.